...business meeting, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Michael. Chairman, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's moment of silence is in honor of two people. First, it is longtime high school nurse Anne Corcoran, who recently passed away, and also Lord Kevin Nicolet. Kevin was a fourth year graduate. His wife Reenie was a longtime secretary in the high school. And Kevin was also a graduate, and a parent of graduates, and grandparent of four graduates this year. Moment of silence for both of them. Thank you very much. Okay, motion for approval of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Chairman, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Brings us to presentations. They're giving the same order? Uh, first up, we have our September eleventh memorial ceremony, uh, time of your park, Flo Santini. Welcome back Flo.
Hi, everybody.
Hi Flo.
Say, um, next year. Everybody doing well? Have a good year. Are we on here? Am I neat as really now? So, um, I thank you for having me come here tonight again, um, next month, September eleventh. And I know the school brings music up, which we all heartily appreciate from year to year. It's something... Sometimes you can't get through these things. I will never forget this day, and as long as I'm at the town, and it's, uh, I'll be at the town twenty-five years, and it's the twenty-fourth anniversary. I will do what I can to bring everyone together to do this for all our fallen, that was happened at twenty hours, and Washington, and I just, uh, we can never forget, and we can never have our children forget. And it's something that we hope, I hold dear within my heart. And I just appreciate the school and everything you do to bring the children up and have everybody still talk about it and do what they need to do to understand what happened that day. September eleventh, it's a Thursday this year, eight o'clock, eight-thirty, we start gathering and start up. We was eight, eight forty-six with our moment of silence when the first plane, the first hour. So on that note, if anybody has any questions, same thing, we have, uh, everybody doing their thing at the memorial, and then our freshmen afterwards. Uh, so anybody have any questions with that?
I just wanna say, thank you Flo.
Um, military, we ask military that are active, um, if they could call the office, have their names put right where they were, uh, we read them off. We can't do deceased and active because we did that one year, and I think we were there an hour, reading the names, which, uh, believe me, I had no problem with it, but everybody in the audience was getting dancy. So it's the military that are on active duty that we ask for names, and we will read them. Everybody knows the yellow bows at the office are for the military. And then we have our red, white, and blue, and monument, our robes. If anybody hasn't seen it yet, you need to come up and see it. Okay, so gentlemen, now we go to the Honor Flight, another passion of mine. I have to thank our principal here for bringing our busload of kids up every time the flight comes in. Uh, these are all militaries that have either been in the war or, no matter what you did during the wartime, or whatever, it helped, it helped what we needed to be done. There, last year, we did have one World War II veteran, and that was amazing. Korean or Nazi, same as the Vietnam, are many. And we do this, and we honor them when we bring them down to Washington. So in the morning, we have to send, that's six o'clock in the morning, at night, seven o'clock at night, seven-thirty, the plane is leaving Washington to come home. So we have everybody there, the... Mostly, they know what happens, but to be there when it happens, everybody who has been to, um, Stewart Airport knows what happens. And just the feeling you get and the yelling of USA for all the, especially Vietnam, they did not get a good welcome when they came home. And this is their welcome. And to see the servicemen really get choked up, and women too. We have a lot of women who go on, nurses that go on flights. So I wanna thank the school, Dr. Bell, for just being there with us and, and doing this. Now, the letters. We get letters from the kids, the kids write the letters, and the principals are here for the letters. They need to be in by the, the sixth of October. By the time we get them to mail call, by the time we get them into the envelopes, by the time we send them to where they have to be. If you're gonna do mail call, you're gonna do the letters, I appreciate that. Matt Comlin, I tell ya, he's been since, this year, with lap blankets. And we get lap blankets that are crocheted by organizations. And so they knew we have the quilting, the quilting ones, uh, and then in New York, we have the knitwits. And so each one, the part of the year, do the quiltings with the lap blankets that we give out to the servicemen. So, and the ones that are going on the flight. So the school, you really don't realize how important that you're making the children and even the adults know it goes on that night. And when you go there to the airport and see this and be part of us, there's nothing like it. And I thank you. That's all I have to say.
Flo, is there a, uh, is it an October date this year?
The flight is October eighteen.
Okay.
October eighteen is the flight. Any questions?
Thank you Flo.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. We miss ya.
It's, it's, uh, you know, I've been doing this, I think since thirteen, two thousand and thirteen, so, yeah. And, and it doesn't, when you talk to them and when you put this stuff together, it's just, you can't do enough. They sacrifice a lot, so. Have a good evening, enjoy.
Thank you. Stay as long as you want.
And welcome back to school, everybody.
Flo, stay as long as you want. Stay, stay as long as you want.
Thank you Flo.
Thanks, everybody, enjoy.
Good night. Uh, brings us to our annual report, the general ash cores effects on ash trees, uh, from our ESF research group, two thousand and twenty-five. We have Casey Stan Kounis and her student research team.
Hi, my name... Hi, my name is Thomas Papudo, I'm an incoming senior, and this is my second year, uh, just beginning to be studying ESF field studies course. Before the presentation, I just wanted to tell you more about the course itself and what it provides to participants. As a part of the study, participants now learn more about our local ecosystem and the great effects of invasive species, but they also learn important skills such as teamwork, endurance, communication, uh, work ethic, and multitasking. On top of that, uh, I found that this study also provides a pretty strong, strong and welcoming community. Uh, for completion of this course, it would be reaching forty-five hours as an active participant in the field study. Participants receive one college credit and one half high school science credit. Some participants, however, did reach ninety dollars, which more than two college credits and one full science credit in high school. I would, yeah, that, that is the introductory introduction, and I would like to now introduce our first group. We'll start our presentation.
Good evening, board members and audience. I'm Stella Sheen. In our group, Mia, Marley, Leah, Molly, Lauren, and Veronica. Please welcome, we are all incoming freshmen, please welcome Mia Griffin. So the problem that our group is trying to address and manage is that the invasive emerald ash core beetles. So then over the summer, um, we survey the ash trees at Bramley, and before we in, and before we introduce the parasitic wasps, then after introducing the parasitic wasps, we survey again to see if they're helping to reduce the E and D population. Our goal for this project is to lower the overall ash core beetle population, develop the ash tree population to grow and recover. These beetles are originally the root agent of their common competition for the shade and the diversity. But as Dr. Yeh asked me, the problem truly is the matter in this space. These beetles grow into the ash trees and start to eat the vascular tissue, which eventually fills up. This is a big issue since ash trees account for seven to eight percent of ash trees in the area. Ash core beetles are a factor in contributing to the decline of ash tree population. We can identify this tissue by examining trees for signs that this invasive species has entered and are damaging ash trees. These signs include deep holes, patterns in the bark, and epigorn shoots. After hatching from eggs laid in the plants of ash tree park, bark will crawl into the tree and eating away from the trees. Deep holes are holes in bark that are created by the beetles, tunnels into the tree. These holes can be delusional. Once beetles have burrowed through a tree, the bark is removed. Squidly patterns can be observed in the tree. Epigorn shoots, they blow down branches that live when they are stressed. When these trees are weakened by the E and Bs, they become susceptible to fall. Oftentimes, they will fall on power lines called the blackouts. If more people make an effort to protect ash trees, then power outages could be less likely to occur. In order to understand that the ash tree population is dying out, we have surveyed the health of trees and compared them to the result of past years. We then have these peristoid onto the healthy ash trees.
Hi, Ken. So, uh, just real quick, this is just some key vocabulary as we go into the results section of the presentation that you just wanna be aware of as you're going through. If there's anything that needs further clarification, please ask questions. So our first, um, our first metric that we track and that we'll be showing you is tree mortality rate. Tree mortality is simply how many trees died this year compared to last year. And we had a little over eight percent increase in tree mortality compared to last year. We surveyed over seven hundred trees, which, while not our total population of number of trees, is a significant portion of it. And as you can see, a good third, little, oh, little over half really, were dead. Which is not very the sign for tree mortality rate. Deep holes. Deep holes are the main metric that we use to track emerald ash core presence. Deep holes are small capital D-shaped holes that cores create when they core into an ash tree. Now, deep holes can be very hard to find due to the texture of bark and how the ash trees bark looks. But they're a very good sign that ash core are present. The vast majority of our trees this year, we found had deep holes, but the, as the previous slide showed, the majority of trees were not dead. Which shows that while ash cores can present in medical trees, they are still survivable despite these four, four ash trees. Epigorn shoots. Epigorn shoots are another one of the main metrics that we use to track if a tree is alive or not. Epigorn shoots are small branches that on ash trees felt much lower than all other, uh, branches. They also tend to curve upwards and are much skinnier and often lean than other branches. Epigorn shoots kind of act as a... They often act as a lifeline for a dying tree, and our only good producer when a tree is under stress, such as the result of invasive species like the emerald ash core. Woodpecker. Woodpecker damage is an important metric to track as it shows the presence of woodpeckers, which are a predator for emerald ash cores. Woodpecker damage can come in other, in other radio ways, mainly those scraping and kind of less focused damage to a tree than we would see from other species such as, uh, the ash core itself. And it's important to track, as we've mentioned, because they hunt. Bark. Bark is simply just a kind of surface level metric just to assess the defenses of a tree and the health of it. It doesn't always tell you how good the tree is doing internally, but it is just this overall sign of its health. And actually, you see, on average, about eighty-five percent of bark was found on a tree, which sounds like an ideal, but it's better than the alternative means. And the canopy is the main metric that we track. Uh, as you can see, the majority of our trees were found at canopy level five, which means that it has little to none, no canopy. Basically, every single five is dead, with the exception of trees being, with the exception of fives, uh, with the exception of trees that have epigorn shoots, as epigorn shoots are very capable of keeping a tree that is on the verge of death alive. After fives, we see a much more increase in trees and cores, branches and ones. Ones, they are trees that are perfect health. And in everything in the tree, it's kind of on the scale. So this is just showing the kind of correlation between last year and this year, or between canopy value and tree mortality. So vast majority of trees that were fives were dead. However, there were some notable examples of trees that had epigorn shoots that were managed to stay alive despite the troubles they were having with their canopy, which can be lost as a tree starts to die. It can be lost naturally through the process of the season, but it's a very good sign of the tree's overall health and their overall health. Parasitoids. Parasitoids were the, uh, bugs that we were releasing into the reserve, uh, as a way to combat emerald ash cores. Parasitoids, also called parasitic wasps, uh, are small bugs who entire purpose is to compete with and to snuff out the invasive species that make emerald ash cores. We have three types of, three species of, of parasitoids that have not been brought to trial yet for this. But we set up traps this year to find, to trap some of our parasitoids and other bugs just to get kind of a estimate for how well these parasitoids have established a population. Um, and we're lucky to find that all three of our species have established a pretty strong population, with the strongest of the, um, uh... Spacious? Sorry, I struggle with names sometimes. Although, we should note that a vast majority of bugs that were trapped in these traps were fell under that other category, which is simply every tree, every species that was in outlandish parasitoids that we released and managed. It's just noted, though, that this is only the third year of releasing parasitoids, so, but this is a good example. There is still definitely good news that parasitoids do grow and definite times in the period of population change. And as you can see, those are pictures of each of the species. They, they're zoomed out, so it's basically kind of hard to tell the differences. Uh, but each of these specimens were once captured by a trapsman to assess their population. And now, I would like to hand it over to the next group of the ESF.
Hello, my name is Brittany McRummit, and in our group, we have Julian Jacob, who is a upcoming senior. I, uh, also an upcoming senior. Uh, Matthew Kidler, who is also an upcoming senior. Gideon Torres, who is an upcoming junior, and William Lloyd, who is an upcoming freshman.
In the research area, there were many limitations that stopped us from reaching maximum potential and efficiency. The most notable of those two, with no doubt, of all of them really, were the amount of poison ivy and cricket bushes that swarmed the area. The entire research zone took place in this included area of woods, which the most nature parts where all of our research trees were are not kept. So the poison ivy and cricket bushes grow without restraint and in turn block off the majority of the paths we need to get places. Another issue is the ground hornets, which as of this year have reached rather high populations and blocked off multiple trees. Another limitation we came across was how trees would grow on top of each other and in turn would block out their canopies, making it nigh impossible to view a number of trees' canopies and rate them. Another rating based issue is the bark quality, which does not have a set standard or measurement for us to determine bark quality. So it is more often than not determined by the researcher's opinion and previous experience, something that can't always be trusted. When it came to recording tree locations, all trees were given numbers. However, the order of the way trees were numbered proved to be incongruent with its systems and was frequently random and misplaced. As well as that, any maps made to find the trees were typically incorrect as they were based off coordinate readings that were just not true. And in turn, more often than not, would be due to misdirection and miscommunication amongst finding trees.
In adapting to limitations, we feel that we may need to establish required protective gear so that we may be able to avoid wasps and cricket bushes. Supply tools to all of our researchers so that we can clear brush, so that we can reach trees, so we can rate them. We need to establish standard of tree quality rating so that we don't have ratings that are incongruent with other ones so that people are misunderstanding the actual health of the tree. And we may need to renumber certain trees so that they are easier to locate, and then maybe we would be losing track of certain trees. And we need a new method to determine coordinates of trees so that we may be able to find them.
I'm Lila, this is Samantha, and this is Victoria, and we are going into our sophomore year. Some offers, observations we have made are that trees in less dense areas of the preserve tend to die individually.
When trees are in less dense areas, there is a greater distance between each tree in general. Increasing the distance between trees causes the emerald, emerald ash cores to have farther distance travel.
As a result, the time it takes to kill areas of ash trees increases, and trees in grassy, open areas die solitarily.
Another observation we have observed was that trees in more dense parts of the preserve tend to die in clusters. Denser areas and ash trees are closer together. Therefore, the emerald ash cores don't have to travel so far and can affect the areas much faster. The ash trees in these areas tend to die in groups versus by themselves. Therefore, denser areas die much faster than the thinner ones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Naomi, and this is Samuel, and we're here to talk to you about a solution to our emerald ash core problem.
So in order to help the predators and the competition to ash cores, we should cut down, destroyed, and infested ash trees in more dense areas of the forest, where, um, ash cores that can live in decaying trees for decades after they die, um, can move on to her other trees and spread the infestation more. And we should replace the cut down dead trees with pine trees that will attract woodpeckers to the areas, as woodpeckers act as predators to the ash cores. And, um, a way to help is if you have any good wood that you have a good use, you could make a woodpecker house pretty easily and, um, place it on near ash trees, which will attract woodpeckers to the area and, um, increase the predator activity for ash cores. And more on why we chose woodpeckers on my assignment.
So based on what was said previously, you guys are probably wondering why woodpeckers are a best solution. So woodpeckers are one of the only natural predators to the emerald ash cores, and if we increase the woodpecker population, then the emerald ash core population will significantly grow now. You're also probably wondering, well, you know, woodpeckers, they strip bark, they kind of harm trees in a minor way. Well, the other reason why woodpeckers strip bark is because they need to get to the emerald ash cores to, you know, kill them. And with, basically, our conclusion is that with more woodpeckers around, the emerald ash cores will decrease in number.
Uh, my name is Andrew Frank, and, uh, we care as a...
I'm Jada.
My name is Lance Snyder, and I'm an upcoming freshman.
My name is Logan, this is Greg, and I'm also an upcoming freshman.
My name is Grace Renee, and I'm also an upcoming freshman.
My name is George Forrest, I'm a freshman.
For future considerations, we can cut out all the overgrowth, such as the vine bushes, etc. We can also cut out the dead ash trees. I did this because the organic structures are blocking the living ash trees from getting their different trees. This will allow the ash trees to grow.
Cutting down the dead ash trees can also stop the emerald ash core population from growing. This aside, like, emetin benzoyate also prevents EAV's population from growing. These actions could increase ash, ash trees' ages expectancy and ash population, allowing them to grow.
Um, another thing, um, in the future, we should consider, uh, monitoring other species. This is, uh, including like lanternflies, this because, um, they're invasive and cause similar harm to ash trees as emerald ash cores.
To make sure ash trees, as well as other plants, are not affected, we will monitor the lanternflies and set traps or release predators if they become a problem.
Emetin benzoyate is an insecticide sprayed on ash trees to kill emerald ash before beetles.
The insecticide should be sprayed at the base of the tree, everyone is in the area, so you can spray it.
Hi. Uh, these are just some final slides to show you a visual representation of what we've been talking about, uh, tonight. So as you can see here, this is a, um, Google Maps view with every single tree that we have in, so you can kind of see, uh, the locations. The south is a great example of seeing both growth and decay in our ash tree population. There are many trees that have grown, which means that they've improved, going from red or yellow to a green or dark green. However, there are definitely some trees that have gone down in canopy level, especially if you look from point, uh, twenty-four slide. If you look more towards the bar right, you can see a group of two, three, of two trees that are in the same place in the twenty-five slide and are placed by a red, yellow tree, showing that those trees have either dropped from a two or one to a three or a four or five. The west, the west is a pretty balanced section. You can see definitely some decay, but overall, you can see a lot of growth. Uh, if you look in the main cluster of trees in the west, you'll see, you'll notice a lot more red and yellow than in that same area in the twenty-five slide, which shows overall health and improvement in this section. And the north, the north is a great example of us not being able to find every tree this year as the shapes are a little different. However, in the trees that carried over, you can see some growth, However, in the trees that carried over, you can see some growth, such as trees at the very top of the river. You can see water went from a red to a green. However, you can also see some things that have decayed, such as the tree that we first bent in the river, which in twenty-four was a green, is now a yellow. That is our presentation. If you have any questions, we would be more than happy to field.
I have a question. So, are we proposing that we need to take some trees down? Is that what we're proposing?
I do not work on that. I was actually...
They're all hiding in the corner. Here they go, let's go, make it up.
Because dead trees often have a canopy number of five, that means much more sunlight gets in, which can cause that overin abundance of vines and of cricket bushes, which not only hurts us as researchers trying to find these trees, but may have an effect on local ecosystems. And they could be reduced by kind of the trees or replacement with trees that will survive and not be affected by the ecosystem too.
Okay, so then are you coming to the board to figure out a way of getting the help to have that happen?
I think you're gonna bring this up a little bit there.
Yeah, so that was one of the proposals we were coming here to make today. So, he might have said this already, I might have said this already, but basically, the reason that we want to remove dead trees is basically because they're just not good to, even a live tree that are around them, they can house ash cores. They can like provide nutrients and shelter for decades after the tree actually died. So it's pretty much just like, almost like a launch pad for like cores to go from one tree to another. And you can see on the data that we got, there's like large clusters of like dead or dying trees. That's basically because of the distance between them. So, the distance between them is short, making it easier for the cores to spread. And we're proposing that we could find a way to cut down dead ash trees in order to make a more viable environment for the living ones so that they aren't under threat of the spread of infestation as easily compared to like the ones. You can see that the solitary ones, they either die and do not affect any other trees or they are alive and like, they're alive when they are spread out because the ash cores have a harder time spreading, you know, spreading the infestation.
So do you know how to use a chainsaw?
So, yeah, basically, to put this in a more simpler way, we're saying that we need to remove the vast root issue from these dead trees so the emerald ash cores will not have a place to stay even after the trees die. Because after a tree dies, it can stay alive up to, not alive, but it can stay there for up to a decade. And we just want to ensure that, you know, the surrounding trees aren't dying as quickly as shown in the data.
Thank you, very, very, you have great answers, thank you.
I just wanted to say that for next summer, you need clothing and equipment and things like that.
Calamine lotion.
We can help with that. We don't embarrass the tree for poison ivy. But you need help there with the chainsaw, I don't think I can operate.
So I think they are, this group of kids that are not here tonight are gonna present to the wood director of Brandline, and they're gonna make that official recommendation that Brandline should start removing clusters of dead ash trees. And then I think there's a conversation about woodpecker houses being constructed. So I think they have facilitated the conversation about that.
I know from experience, I definitely contribute to the eight percent attack mortality rate. I had to have an ash tree removed at my home in May. It's been slowly dying for about five or six years. And I thought I had the epic armor shoot, and I was very hopeful. And then I'm sitting down there and branches start to fall, and I said someone's really wanting to get hurt. But I learned a great deal tonight, so thank you so much. I never throw up, I left maybe an eight-foot stump. And there could be some ash cores that I didn't think of that, but you gave me ideas maybe to get that removed or to put a woodpecker home there. And I think your tech department, I know they do a lot of building with different, that's a great project to give back to the environment, so thank you. I learned a great deal and I have some work to do now. I'm not gonna penetrate now, but maybe a woodpecker home, you think? Or maybe plant a pine tree, maybe some?
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us next to our inner reporter, Curriculum Instruction, and the district-wide academic plan, Dr. Natasha Walnuts.
Thanks to our students and for Lucy, thank you so much for that awesome presentation. I'm just gonna give you a quick four-year update on our curriculum instruction initiatives. So I just want to show, this is, I wanted to do a visual just to show you some of the different areas we've been working on in the last four years as we're coming into year five. The black print on there is stuff that we have done over the last four years and have completed or in a really good space. And the red are things that are coming up, either we're in the process of developing and kicking off or we're gonna be kicking off this fall, this coming school year. Some of those things with our literacy coaching, we've had literacy coaching the first year I came here. We had our two literacy coaches. And this year we're gonna be, this year we're gonna be presenting teachers with curriculum menu that teachers can choose from. So they have different areas of expertise. They can do individual coaching or team coaching with our coaches. And they're gonna work on also, uh, literacy, or curriculum maps or our pre-K. We haven't done that yet with that group. And we're gonna kick off our science reading stuff, which is inter-reading. We're gonna be working on Hegarty this fall in the November range. We just wanted inter-reading to get into place. And also implement DIBELS. We also have a new sign, or social studies resource. We're gonna be researching this coming school year to implement next year. And we are also kicking off our leader in B at the beginning of the school year. We've had one year planning with leader in B, and that's officially kicking off K through eight. So I just gave some definitions of those very specific ones that we're in the process of working on right now. Some of those things like common assessments in our six to twelve. We didn't have, in the primary grades, we have quite a few assessments that we work on the students to gauge their level of growth and where they are within the curriculum. Our six to twelve, we rely primarily on rating systems. Now we're doing common assessments, which if you're in algebra class, all algebra teachers are giving a common assessment between all kids. And looking at the data and assessing where, where in relation to the standards students are measuring. And those are happening in all our six to twelve grades. We're also getting a, in our six to eight, our new resources, new math. We're gonna be investigating this year in a new math resource. And we are kicking off this year with a new social studies curriculum. It's the National Geographic Learning, it's called Centage. And it's high in literacy, reading and writing. And that's what we're looking for in all of our literacy programs. Other pieces that we're looking for when we're vetting research materials for our resources is the adaptability for special education students. You know, can we increase the print, can we have multiple languages? Those sorts of things in addition to, are they aligned with our reading and writing initiative and the state standards? We're also looking at Portrait of Graduate that just came out. It was adopted by New York State over the summer. And it's something that we don't really have direction on yet, but we know it's coming. And they've basically identified what do we want all graduates to be once they graduate from school. And they define that in state regulations now. And what that's gonna look like for each district, what we have to do to be in compliance with it, we're not sure. So more to come on that. We're also looking at rural language resources. That would be in a high school and then coming down to our middle school schools. Other instructional support initiatives, our data dashboard we've been talking about. We didn't have that originally when we were at School Tool. And once we moved over to Power School, we had to build Power School. And now we have some of our data dashboard back. But we're looking at different ways to maybe enhance that as well. And our MTSS platform, we've been working on this summer, just getting all the data in one place. And also what the platform would be for teachers, that does take time. And that also relies on Power School, so. Our curriculum development tool, which we are using Tottle. That's actually a student management system. But we're looking at it right now for curriculum management. We have New York Learns at the moment, which is slowly becoming defunct. And so we're moving it over this summer, actually migrating things over as we speak. And that should be ready for teachers early to mid-September. And also at the high school level, expanding our micro-credentials. Are there any questions? So, just a few things we did. Give me one second, just a little bit. Oh, I just wanted to show you. This is what our coaching menu looks like.
Will you be giving us a demo of that software, starts in September?
The which one?
The software for the, was it Power, we're not using School Tools anymore, correct?
Right, last year we switched to Power School.
Right, so did we start that already?
Yeah, last year.
Yes.
Oh, we did last year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
And the piece is off of Power School, which is our MTSS management, which is our multi-cured services for AIS services. Social emotional learning, those kinds of supports are managed through our student information system. There's a portal for that piece. The other piece are data dashboards. We have data all over the place. Teachers usually have to migrate that into one space, and it's different spreadsheets. We want that all in one space, and when they open up a student profile, they can compare at ease the different levels of data that we have for students at different times.
Natasha, was there, I know they were talking about it. There was, is there a medical link as well with Power School? When you pull up a student that you can, you know, see?
They have the alerts, like they didn't...
Oh, just the alerts, they don't have like anything detailed?
No, because that would use a different...
Of different programs?
They switch, and there's a program they have. But everything does sync every night in terms of the demographic.
Oh, well, that's something.
Student names, phone numbers, address changes.
It saves a lot of...
Every night it syncs with health, the health program, and with transportation. So that is, someone makes one change to their secretary, and he needs a phone number change. That night, you'd love to be on both of their systems. So that the nurse in the bus has to say the number.
Yeah, that's it.
Otherwise your call and number doesn't work.
Yeah, that's, yes.
Just say with the health piece, any health alerts. So if the nurses are in the health system, and they make changes to immunizations or a health alert, that will have a flag on our system.
Nancy, another thing, you know, we're trying to work more efficiently and use our systems and capacities. So like Natasha was saying with Power School, we also have parents' room. So for example, our school nurses used to send home letters to our fifth grader, we need this immunization. They're no longer printing, stuffing, liking and sticking. What we're doing now is they can put the letter out via Parents Square through our, via email, via text, and the parents of those fifth graders, they just customized it and we believe that the nurses.
Wonderful, though.
You know, it could be a day's work for a nurse and, you know, it's a lot. So we're really trying to ask the question, you know, what are the capabilities of our systems? What are most time-consuming tasks? How do we, Johnson was charging us because we saved a buck. How do we save money and stamp? So we're trying to look at all these different systems that we're bringing in to make, you know, work harder, not scarier, and also people have information immediately.
Like ours would rather have theater.
That's right.
Than a letter, the mail.
That's unbelievable step, honest to goodness, in terms of...
Also, Mr. Madison, working really hard with getting communication out. And we did a little bit of a trial. And I must thank Mike Ulrich, our director of technology, and his team working with me, Transportation Maria Meninsky, who recently transitioned to the Transportation Department, has done a magnificent job. And we trialed it this summer with our small student population. And we no longer send out the postcards with the pickup and drop off and the routing information. In the beginning of September, actually at the end of August, our families will get all of that information via email and text, excuse me, via Parents Square, the postcards will not go out. So every student in the district used to get a postcard. So that's an incredible amount of work and money, so stay tuned for that.
Yeah, thank you, it was right.
Anthony, what was the data on, you sent high school student schedules on this summer?
Yeah, so I had sent the, and again, Mike and he is helping with that. We were able to create a PDF file. And a lot of this is preserving the rights of the students and privacy. So we're, maybe we use Parents Square then to put them out to private people, to everybody. So the program just reads everyone's email. And then we're watching this happen live, right? So I'm watching thirty people receive it, eighty people receive it, two hundred people. Then the next thing you know, seven hundred and eighty people, actually, because there's multiple addresses, it was like a thousand people got this information. Then all of a sudden, ten people viewed it, twenty people viewed it. So by the time the end of the day hit, like we sent home seven fifty schedules, seven hundred and fifty schedules, and six hundred, six hundred reviewed, right? So when I understand this is new for people, right? So I called up a message through Parents Square. So between Parents Square and Power School, it really is a very efficient way of getting information out. And the nice thing is it translates over, so again, the native language, the home language is in there. It's a quite keep, for, I really do love Parents Square.
And the number of kids who didn't get a schedule because of that email was a single digit, wasn't it?
Oh, I think it was five. And then we pulled them off. So I apologize, right? So we have five people who didn't get a schedule because it bounced back. Because it tells you, these people, we tried, didn't work. So I had the guidance team call up, hey, we don't have the right email. And we correct the email in the system. So every time we do this, we'll get better in terms of, and more efficient. And my, you know, the information we're sending out now is, hey, this is the last mailing I'm sending home. Get our Parents Square, please, because everything's gonna be coming through this.
So do the parents know that this is, this is how they're gonna receive it, right?
Yeah, so again, I'm writing my family letter up to welcome back. And in there is, hey, please hear the things going on this year. Please make sure you're in Parents Square, make sure you're in Power School. This is how you're gonna stand on top of your students, our relationship, this two-way format. It's a two-way format. I get parents sending me, hey, here's a picture of my kid who is getting ready to go to college. So they send it out, and we ship it out, whatever, but it's always great. Yes, but, and then there's a QR code we put at the bottom. Hey, if you still don't, your mute skin is QR code. Get logged in, if you need help, call the office, so.
There was, there was onboarding last year with the parents. So we did do a lot of test runs and smaller communications, not the important bus runs and that sort of thing towards the end of the school year, just to get the kinks out and work gets around that, is the way to go, so. Get immediate information.
That's great.
And it's awesome that all of our systems are talking.
It's very, the beauty of it is it's very transactional, it's just not a one-way, you know?
Right, yeah.
That's exciting. We dug rats, I'm sorry.
There's just so much fun. Next up, my next presentation is our district-wide academic plan. And I went over the outcomes from this last year, from our plan from last year. So I do have our goals and the outcomes of those goals. So I do have our goals and the outcomes of those goals, whether we reached them, partially reached them. In your board packets, you will have the actual full report, where it goes through the data a little bit more deeply. Which will be also on our website, district website tomorrow. The presentation's not going to go as deep, it's just going to say whether we achieved it or not, and I'll look over there. This is one of the requirements also for our title funding. So just so you know, we do have to do a district-wide plan. Each of the schools, because they are all Title I schools, they qualify, they also have to do a school-wide plan. So all of their building level teams get together throughout the year. They talk about what budget they have for the different components and the needs are for the buildings. We talk about it in our D L T, our district level team, which I'm a part of. And let's see, Bill, who's not here tonight, is also a part of. And we put this plan together, we reviewed it this summer. It is in line with our strategic plan, so you'll see on the, this coming year's goals, that it's aligned with our strategic plan. The building levels are also aligned to this and the strategic plan, so it's quite nice. So our last year's district academic priorities and outcomes. For our priority one, which is teaching and learning, we had two goals that we measured and we achieved both. One was to see a decrease in the number of discipline referrals and an increase in the number of positive referrals students received at the secondary level. We did notice in our sixth through eight, only because it was the first year of ending the sixty-eight building. We had to compare numbers from the seven-eight building to the six-eight building. They went up only by about thirty incidents. But overall, between the sixth through twelve, we did see an overall decrease. They did add a whole grade level, so that I felt was a great. We did see an increase in positive results from our P L C associate student survey, school survey, and family engagement surveys. Between spring and twenty-four and spring of twenty-five. So we took some measures, we targeted the things that we wanted to make improvements on, that we worked on at the building level and district level. And we mostly achieved all of those. I think there are only a couple of questions that we are still working through, so we did achieve those in full. And most of that's like student conferencing, student feedback, which we're, had a slight growth issue as well. Priority two, which is curriculum development, we had multiple measures here. As you can see, we achieved that goalpost, our revised course catalog on our district website, we achieved that. The student voice survey, we saw positive results from fall to spring. And we mostly achieved our staff baseline when it comes to curriculum instruction. And we saw parent involvement survey also mostly achieved. So there are only, I think, one or two indicators that either stayed the same or slightly decreased. And just the specifics in the information. Each secondary content area has developed an administrative mid and final standards based common assessment, we achieved that. Most of our secondary level have had four common assessments, and we're working to build capacity for those as well. I wanted over ninety percent of our K twelve or derivative courses mapped out. We have pretty, we're getting there. We have a lot of courses at the high school, our core teachers at the high school. Although they have the most maps completed, they have by far double the maps between our middle and high school courses. So they do have a big job. So we set goals for this coming year to have everything completed. There are also some that were completed that we put up loads in your learns. So we're still waiting for teachers to come back. We should have a higher number than our seventy, I think it's seventy-eight percent completion. Our elementary and high school didn't beat that. Our elementary and middle school. Priority three was to build our K twelve multi-tiered system and support. We have our MTSS, we have plans for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We have actually websites for elementary, middle, and high school. So our elementary buildings both share the same resources, they have the CUP scores for all of their assessments. So those are achieved. We also have some of the strategies, you'll see on our website, we have literacy strategies that our literacy coaches have done. And we have, of course, our teaching series that were, haven't been placed in individual coaching. Our data dashboard, and we talked about this with Power School, because we switched to Power School and had to build that capacity. It's a big task when you're switching your student information system over. We've been working on the data dashboard, so we have some of our data up that we were vetting over the first of last year into spring. And we're working to get some of the other data posted. So it's coming along as we speak. Student surveys, or teacher surveys and administrators will, at each level, have their MTSS website. Provide a concise list of resources, that's on our internal website. Like I said, we have all of our CUP scores for each assessment, which gives us information of whether they should be tier one, two, or three. And a levels of agreement with P L C associate surveys will increase by five percent. So when we look at all of our measures together, we did make a positive increase of over five percent agreement that we're moving in the right direction. So positive feedback from all of our stakeholders, which are our students, parents, and our teachers. So these are our priorities for this coming school year, twenty-five, twenty-six. We vetted all the data and we sat down as teams. Each of the buildings is taking their piece of it, but this is our overall. We're actually changing surveys this year for our elementary and middle, for our leader and B survey. It has the same components and the same similar measures, so we're going to use that instead of our P L C survey. And the high school will continue to have the P L C survey. We also want to keep at least a minimum of two family engagements per building activities. That's one of the core pieces of our Title I requirement. And we want to increase student attendance by one percent. I know that's all of ours, that's on all of our building level plans. And also, we're investigating maybe adding Power School, or Power School LinkedIn. And Portrait of the Graduate, we're just beginning working on. Oh, and I just want to point out, I'm sorry, you'll see the strategic plan priority areas listed under each of the goals. Which is student welcoming for this one in particular, priority two. The end, the academic areas, those are the subcategories. So each of these goals measure those. So again, we're looking at a hundred percent curriculum maps in Tottle. Tottle does use an A I feature to help with unit writing and daily lesson plan writing and creating reverse and assessments. So it can go down to that level. And finally, our priority three is data analysis and communication. Looking at our screeners, I do want to add a social emotional learning screener. That's something that we don't have now as part of our MTSS. We do have a lot of supports for that area, but we don't have an active screener for social emotional learning, which is K twelve. That was one of the big highlights too. We also want to increase our survey responses in a positive direction of five percent, or a five-point increase. And have the other percent curriculum right now. And for our Title I, Part A requirement, we do have to put a provision in there that we will pay particular attention to our home student population. There is set aside funding in our Title I that we can use for resources for students, transportation for students for after-school activities or extracurricular activities, sports. So that they can come to those kinds of events with their family, with transportation. If they need clothing, school supplies, that sort of thing, and we can help them fuck that. So that's a set side requirement for, so we have to go stated in there, that these things will be provided. And that's it. Any questions?
We're supposed to be using a mic, so. So I love all the feedback loops that are kind of built in this process with all different surveys. One question that came to mind as you're listing off the different surveys, is there precedent or do we have ability to reach out to recent grads to kind of gauge their feeling of readiness that they have for moving to the whatever workforce or school or, you know, academics that they're going through?
We could, that would be part of our community outreach. So we send it to our staff, or not our staff, our staff is our school community, and our current student, and our families. So if they are part of the family, they're more than welcome to take that as far as outreach. But that's something we can talk about too.
And we have, was that, I was talking with Mr. Chen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard it, Mr. Chen. So we were talking about doing that. The challenge is honestly, kids go to college and we sometimes lose track of them. I really try to catch up with the habit globally. It's amazing the amount of kids you catch during, once a break. But I think that we'll work to send, you know, gather those emails before they, their personal emails. Really what we need to do is get the collector their personal emails before they leave. And I like following up, because I'm interested in how many credits are accepted by the colleges and what, how that's working out for them. And no, so it's definitely something we should be exploring, I agree.
And that's going to come down with the Portrait of Graduate design. Because of the investment of how kids are prepared when they leave, we do want to find out. And I know we've, we've talked about that considerably. A lot of schools try to do the outreach, and it is hard. And we talked about doing an alumni network internally, so that we can even connect our graduates, kids who are in college or leave to college, to other professionals in the community who are former grads. So there are things in the think tank right now that are coming from all different directions we all have.
And the data nationally, there are several different organizations that you can subscribe to. Who will do surveys of your recent alums. But the return rate for kids that are five years old is only about five percent. So there is some good data that we get from the National Student Clearance. That's nationwide data that they collect, not like high schools, but from colleges to get information about college freshmen. Another thing I'd like to do with Anthony's help is have the college freshman roundtable at Christmas time. Like the kids to come back at Christmas time to speak to our seniors and seniors about the, all the things that they were prepared for and the things they weren't prepared for. You know, add that, because that's right, that's a media. You know, we just survived the semester, here's where we were ready, here's where we weren't, or here's where we better get ready.
That sounds, I was also just going to say, we also have to be similar, like a trades, you know, bags of the kids that are going into trades right from here. How were they prepared for those these efforts and all the other field research, kind of things.
I want to make the day up.
Yeah, exactly. Good evening.
I can say, just an interesting observation, especially this year, was we had a lot over the course of this year. Into the summer, we had a lot of return students that had graduated within two years, three years, and four years, that had come back to sub. And they, their feedback to us was, thank goodness, I spent, I reduced my time in college by one year because of the amount of college credit. So that was the biggest feedback, is they're coming, our return on investment is having qualified subs coming back within a short amount of time. So, and there, you know, we asked, I'll take the opportunity to ask them then, you know, how was it? Have you felt prepared? And they felt they were extremely prepared. Some may say not, depending on, you know, what they took in college versus high school. But we're seeing a lot of future teachers coming back.
We started a five-year alumni that's been more like for our staff teachers.
Yeah. So it's coming back.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Just to make it official, we have a public comment. Okay, brings us to reports. First up, we have Dr. John Bell, Superintendent of Schools.
Okay, first of all, we completed our first year on summer school with air conditioning, and the people will know very, very well. Summer school in the past has been very hot, so having K twelve in the A C was crazy. Summer school graduation will be this Thursday here at the high school at nine AM. Next week, there are new student orientations for incoming kindergarteners, sixth graders, and ninth graders. You just consult the schedule on the website or through the offices in the buildings and call. If you have a K six or nine grader, you haven't heard anything. Our ten-month staff come back on Tuesday, September second. And our students have the first day of school on Thursday, September fourth. High school fall sports started yesterday. The middle school modified sports start on the first day of school, which begins Thursday before. And then quickly, an update for construction. The new rubber surface roof at H B is done. The rubber resurfacing of the roof here of the high school, middle school is about eighty-five percent of already done. They started at this end, and are working their way in that direction. But don't want to interfere if they aren't done by the first day of school, won't interfere with school at all. The H B roof, the bulk of it was done last spring. And it was no fanfare, because it's not like the old days of tar and all those things. You're not peeling off a roof to put a new one on, you're adding a new rubber surface on top of the current rubber surface. And then in terms of all the interior work, there's all the HVAC work done here. All the classrooms are done, and now the destruction workers are just in the hallways tying all the things together. So our custodians are working hard to clean all the rooms, as well as they're working hard to clean the rooms at E and B now that summer school's on. High school, middle school has been done. We dispatched all our custodians to the two elementaries to make sure that everything is spade span, well needed for our kids on the floor. And that's all right.
Very good. Mr. John Timm, Assistant Superintendent of Business.
Thank you. So on the screen, I have a presentation responding to the Office of State Control's audit report. What happened is, obviously, the O S C, the Office of State Control, conducted an audit on November twenty-third. The report identified certain conditions and opportunities for the Superintendent of the Board to review their consideration. And they revisited the district in February slash March two thousand twenty-five to review the progress in implementing the recommendations. What we had to do was, this is what the report looked like on the left, obviously you can't read that, but that was pretty much what the report. We had a copy at the district office, we posted it on the district website, and published it in the local paper. Debbie, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I just wanted to talk to a few basic points. You know, first of all, there's a four percent, they don't want you to have more than four percent of your fund balance. And that's an arbitrary number, it's not scientific by any stretch of the word. And municipalities don't have to have four percent, they can have up to eight percent. And why one entity has one percentage and one has another, there's no rhyme or reason to that. But, you know, some of the talking points that are important for people to know, I don't expect people to read all this stuff from the audit that was done in twenty twenty-two or the update. But we have increased taxes in five years. We're in the middle of doing a hundred and sixty million dollars of construction with no tax increases. We had sent eight million of fund balance set aside for a one-time payment to Bosse's for their hundred and fifty-nine million dollar project. We were going to simply write a check and pay our fair share of it. Unfortunately, Cornwall's board voted against the financing model. We needed every board in Orange County to vote yes on how we would finance it, and it would allow us to write a one-time check to avoid paying the interest. But every board had to approve it. Cornwall's board was the only board in Orange County that voted no. So instead of us writing an eight million dollar check, over the next fifteen years, we're going to have to pay thirteen point two million dollars because of all the interest. So that's part of the reason why we had an extra eight million dollars, we were going to write that check to Bosse's. So then we got yelled at by the state because we had the eight million dollars. And we're like, listen, we had it, it's Cornwall's fault, blame the rich guys, not us, you know? So the other thing too is that, you know, our costs go up every year because education is really, really people-intensive. It's not like it's an Amazon warehouse with robots and running all over the place, you know? So we're going to have our costs go up every year, which will shrink our surpluses. We're using our surpluses to pay for those increasing healthcare costs and salaries, so that we don't have to ask the taxpayers for more money. We're using our surpluses to pay for those increasing healthcare costs and salaries so that we don't have to ask the taxpayers for more money. But we've never run a deficit. We've always run a surplus in every single penny of accounting for. I gave you an article tonight in your packets. This was in, uh, in the Albany Times Union. New York State must soon come up with nearly three billion dollars a year to provide health coverage for half a million residents who are losing their federally funded care. So there are a half a million people in New York State who are not US citizens. They're legally here. They're not illegal immigrants or anything like that. They're legal here, but they're not US citizens. They're going to be kept on Medicaid, but by state law, the state has to provide. So since the feds aren't kicking in, the states are going to have to pay the whole share. So starting in next year's budget, the state's going to have to find an extra three billion dollars. So how does that affect us? There's a limited amount of money and the two big, the state budget and the two biggest drivers on the expenditure side are healthcare costs and education costs. So if healthcare is going to go up three billion next year, that's not a good sign for us because there's only so much money. If they're getting it, we're not getting it. So it's very important. We are also very dependent on state aid. Of our hundred and, hundred and.
Three.
Hundred and three million dollar budget, sixty-nine million, that one oh three comes from state aid. We only get twenty-nine million in local taxes. So we live and die with the state budget. When Wall Street has a bad year, we have a bad year because over twenty percent of the revenue for the state budget is from Wall Street. When things like this pop up and they got to find three billion dollars next year to pay healthcare, we're going to have a bad year.
John?
Yes.
When you say three billion dollars next year, you're still going to be responsible for this every year to some extent?
Yes.
So that's a, that's a, a built-in.
It's not a one-time cost, it's an annual cost.
Yeah, that's, that's a built-in part.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's why schools that are heavily dependent on state aid have to have more than four percent of the money set aside because we have to be prepared. I did some numbers just to give you some ball parts. If they froze our state aid next year as opposed to giving us the typical increase that they give us every year, that would cost us anywhere from one point five to three million dollars. If that's roughly how much extra we get on a regular year. So if they just said, hey, we're going to freeze you, you're going to be flat, we'd have to figure out where to come up with one and a half to three million dollars. If they cut our state aid five to ten percent, that would be somewhere between three and a half to seven million dollars. If they said they were going to cut our, our aid ten percent, we'd be in the hole for ten million dollars. So you can see how fast we can go from being flush to being in trouble because we are not a well-to-do community that is very reliant on local tax dollars. We're very reliant on state tax dollars, which makes us vulnerable when things are not good, that we can really get whacked. So I just wanted people to understand, these are big, big numbers. So our very positive financial outlook right now could become very negative and hurt. So I want people to understand, we have this money because we, our people are really good about not spending every penny in the budget. They work hard to buy the things they need to buy and not spend money frivolously. So therefore we're able to have a surplus come June 30th. But saving that surplus money for a rainy day keeps us from laying off tons of people when, when the economy gets skinned or the state cuts back on our aid. So I just want people to understand that before JT gets into all the detail. Why do we save money when things are good? We're putting it away for a rainy day because it always comes. And when you've ended this, this is thirty-five years, like me, I've seen a lot of rainy days. With Andrew Cuomo, with Mario Cuomo, Governor Patterson, he wrecked us the worst. He took millions of dollars away from us in January, in the middle of the school year. There was a thing called the GEA, the gap elimination agency. And they literally took millions of dollars in the middle of the year after they promised us. And we built the budget on July 1 going around. In January, they went out and they, I think they took two point four million from us back around twenty ten or so. Might have been two thousand nine, right after the, the debacle of oh eight. Uh, so these things can happen. So the state controllers can say whatever they want about the money. And then JT will tell you about our remedies for it. But we save it when things are good for our purpose. So that we don't have to lay off people and have huge class sizes and cut electors and put kids in three and four study halls in high school when the time hits the skin of the law. Okay, enough preaching, I'll let you go.
Thank you, Pastor. No, so a very strong message there and I appreciate that. So there were six recommendations. I will walk you through each one. And the responsibility was either implemented, partially implemented and not implemented. And I'll talk about how we're reacting to that. So the first one was reasonable budgets. The board and the district officials, super delegate, like this, that include reasonable estimates for appropriations and the amount of fund balance that will be used to fund operations. You can see it's very small, but there's big gaps between what was budgeted and what was actually spent. For instance, the teacher salaries at about sixteen percent and then those percentages go down. I'll kind of walk through the salaries first, then I'll address health insurance, BOSI's, ERS, TRS and social security. Direct transportation, I don't know why, on air. Reasonable budget, we were, we didn't even have, we didn't have a budget that year, so we shouldn't have put that in the spot. That actually supports my argument of adding a little bit more money to transportation. So the first part of recommendation one, reasonable budgets and looking at teacher salaries. There's a lot of things in the budget that we have to prepare for that we don't know. One of those is for instance, potential retiree buyout. I start the budget year not knowing you've got to retire and I have to pay that out. If I have twenty retirees at a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. I don't know that. I can only forecast, I presented here one time, that there's twenty-five teachers that are eligible to retire in the next two, three years. Doesn't mean they're retired, but if all twenty-five retire and we have to buy them out at about a hundred thousand dollars each, it's a lot of money. So I have to kind of factor that in there. Another thing is I inherited twenty-one, twenty-two, the budget. Twenty-two, I'll be very transparent, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-four. I used a method that I inherited and that was I looked at salary lines and I took the increase of what the contract was, say five percent. And I took that previous salary line and multiplied that by five percent. What happened was that was actually exponentially adding to the budget because I, I inherited inflated salaries. I turned around in twenty-four, twenty-five and I calculate to the penny every employee, what they're going to make through the year. So if this money came in a month later and it ordered twenty-four, twenty-five, discrepancies between what I budgeted and the actuals would be very narrow. So if you look at this line right here, I know it's very small, they looked at twenty-three, twenty-four. If it was twenty-four, twenty-five, that number would be small percentages. But what happens is when you have inflated salaries, there's other things that are going to be inflated as well. I'm talking about that. But my approach is now giving more accurate salary figures. I did that for twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six. Health insurance, the budget factors and potential health insurance coverage changes. If we have somebody that's getting a buyout for three thousand dollars and turns around and has to get family covered in the middle of the year, that's thirty thousand dollar difference. Cost the, cost the district a family plan thirty-one thousand, so twenty whatever thousand. If I get ten people to do that, I have to prepare for it. Somebody switches from single to family, that's closer to twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, you can't trust that the, they say that they're locked into the insurance premium at the beginning of the year, but those could change and increase throughout the year. You never know. So it's in preparation for that. The number looks like it was inflated, but I have to prepare for the rainy day. BOSI's, Tony will tell you this, the budget reflects potential for special needs students coming to the district during the school year. We don't know who's going to move here. What is it? A family of four is a million dollars if, if, if they bring four special needs kids into the district. You have to prepare for that. So in that line number, you can't reflect what's happening. Tony has displayed that well. ERS, TRS and social security, they're tied to the actual, the actual salary number. So when I was taking five percent of that line number and it was a little over, so would ERS, TRS and social security naturally. So as I chiseled down and figured out exact numbers, ERS, TRS and social security number will be tight as well. So that's recommendation one and that's how, that's how we are actually solving the problem. Like I said, if it was a month or two later, we'd see a complete difference.
And let me just say.
Go ahead.
One of the reasons, one of the ways we were able to do no tax increases in this current school year is because of the work he did with salaries, ERS, TRS and social security. Because he worked really hard to tighten that number. That made the difference to get raising taxes and not getting. You can only do that once. You only pull that rabbit out of the hat once. So it won't happen again, but they criticized it. This past year, he used that to tighten it up and not have a tax increase. Now it won't be imaginable in action. So it's a one and done.
Recommendation two, appropriating fund balance. Board and district officials should discontinue the practice of appropriating fund balance that is not needed or used to fund operations. So what happens is when I get all my expenses and my revenues, in order to match my expenses to my revenues, we often use fund balance to bridge the gap. This was deemed partially implemented. The reality is we never, we had not, since I've been here, we haven't even touched that fund balance because a lot of those anticipated expenses actually decrease. Same, we get some unexpected revenue. So if I allocate two million dollars to bridge the gap and to balance the budget using appropriate fund balance, we haven't used it yet and they're knocking that, saying you shouldn't do that. So they considered it partially.
And if you think about it, you say, holy cow, what do you mean there's a surplus of two million dollars? You didn't, you can put two million in fund balance and the balance of budget to match your revenues and expenditures, but you didn't spend, you overspent by two million dollars. People say, how in the world could you do that? What do you think about a hundred million dollar budget? That's only two percent. So you still spent ninety-eight percent of your budget, you just didn't spend two percent. And then they write something like that. So this is, you know, when you're auditors, this is what you do. But, you know, in the grand scheme of it, our budget was ten million and we had a surplus of three. That's a whole different story. They'd have a budget of a hundred million and you had two percent.
Recommendation three, partially implemented is surplus fund balance. The district will continue to plan and will do this to reduce surplus fund balance. We talked about the four percent. We have an excess of eight million. Will continue to work as a board and administrators, funding one-time expenditures, i.e. capital projects, funding needing reserves as we discussed earlier tonight. And another option is to pay off current debt, which I'm looking at. Review reserves. The board and district officials should review all reserves and determine whether the amounts reserves are necessarily reasonable. We just took error back. So that has been documented, district officials have reviewed reserves with the board. Recommendation five, funding for reserves and capital projects, fully implemented. They like the amounts that we put into the reserves. They like the fact that we've taken reserves and put it into capital projects. They don't have any issues with the amounts. They've agreed that that was fully implemented. Recommendation six is to revise our reserve fund policy. So our current policy was not enough. Like I, I mentioned before, um, you know, I matched our policy with ten other districts. It was the same. They didn't like it. They want us to dive deeper and our policy committee is currently reviewing this. So it's not implemented, but it will be soon, probably at the next board meeting, or board meeting after, after we review it a few times. So I put together this little kind of table. I know that, but if you look, there's pretty much check marks all across the board except for recommendation number three because we're still kind of thinking about that. Recommendation one, reasonable budgets, I've worked that out. Recommendation two, appropriating fund balance. By conquering number one, it conquers number two, reliance on, on appropriating fund balance. Recommendation four, I reserve review, I presented to the board, reserves. Recommendation five is fully implemented. Recommendation number six will be done, it goes to check mark because the committee's actually working on this. And recommendation three in terms of surplus fund balance, we need to kind of spend some time to talk together and what, what happens, do I want to take for one-time expenditures? Will that eight million, eight point one million? And what possible reserves do we want to put that in? So that's pretty much how we've reacted to this audit. Are there any questions at all?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I, so I was just thinking about this and I remember one year we had an issue where, and I don't know what percentage, and I'm not asking you to answer it today because you need to probably do a little research to figure this out. But there were times when, uh, I know that principals, assistant superintendents, all, all of those are, uh, superintendent of, uh, are education, all that would come up with what they needed uh, for them, like software and, and things like that to work with, um, teachers or whatever. And there was a time when, um, that money was asked for from the taxpayer, but wasn't actually used. Is there some of that money, um, and I know you, you'd have to go research what? Are we using the money that we're supposed to be using and not putting it back into the fund balance? Could that be part of the problem also?
So when you take it exponentially, like all across the every line and you say, you know, two to five percent of that which we put in the budget isn't spent, that's significant amount of money and that happens in time. So the, the schools, when I meet and have, sit down with Anthony, I'll ask him, let's go through each line number, what do you need? What do you need for materials and supplies?
Right.
They, they don't necessarily always spend that.
Right.
So there's a thousand dollars. It might seem like a little bit, but you take the entire budget.
Over years.
And a thousand dollar, you're going to be like, I'm not going to knock it for being prudent.
No, no, no.
But that's a responsible thing. They didn't need it. Let's put it back. That, that's an example of some things that end up accumulating going into the fund.
Right. So that does higher percentage.
Yeah. If you ask for it in a budget, I'm not going to knock them for not, they're not going to say, well, I have two thousand left. I'm just going to make something up.
I, and I understand it. We can actually go back into the fund.
I, I, I don't know.
Is there any tightening of the belt that we can possibly do there? That's what we're.
Well, I think what they're saying is it's, we're not at the point now where we're tightening. They're just, it's the opposite. We're not spending everything in our budget for.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
And it's really mostly though, it was in those teacher salary lines. It wasn't in the expenditure.
No, very fluid.
But I mean, there is stuff we do for the teachers, um, in June. You know, we get to the end of the year and there's excess money, like last June, we spent twenty thousand on new extra band instruments. I went to the band teachers and said, where are you behind schedule or what do you need? Or are there instruments right now that kids are responsible, like the smaller instruments, that kids are responsible to buy or rent? And they may not have the money to do it. Can we buy some, can we buy some claridance so those kids who can't afford to buy their own can still be in band? And I think that's part of the reason why our band numbers are going through the roof because we've taken that financial difficulty off the table.
And I could take some of those little extras, those little thousand dollars, as I say, and put them together and go do something which is greatly different. Or I've had, it's, you know, we've done the same thing with.
Every day, kids, there were thousands of dollars coming years back, well, the AEDs. But they, when they go, most of them have to replace, be replaced right about the same time.
Yeah, they're all the same.
Those are thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that came out of all of that. It's, it's like at the end of the year, you're like, oh, this is not what we do.
And what's great is because we've been able to do so many things that are like one-time things or long-time things, besides just the facilities, things like replacing the AEDs by two different times now, by three years, we've bought extra band instruments at the end of the year, two of it by three years. And we did extra weight equipment for the weight room this past year. The great thing about doing all those things is that when the rubber meets the road and the state cuts us, all the uniforms we had to replace that said Raiders, now we have.
Right. That's the other thing. I was just going to ask was.
So now all those things have been done, so that if we have a couple tough years and we have to really use our fund balance to get through, we're equipped to do that because we've been in a good place financially. So we've been able to go do all these things that if we had to go through a three-year drought, we could survive because we've been replacing everything that we could while things were good to be prepared for the next downturn.
And this is really, John, in all honesty, I mean, not to minimize that the state says A, B and C and the way it was publicized really was misrepresenting a lot of things. But this is, this is really a slap on the wrist for saving money.
Right.
This is, that's what this is ultimately. So we have to figure out how to diversify this money appropriately so that it's where it needs to be. I think, I think your, your solutions are great.
But I also think we have to be conservative too, and as you said, because we don't know what's coming up before us and I, I hate to put it in places and then we can't get to it, you know?
Because some of the reserve accounts. Some of the reserve accounts require public approval to put money in and then you need public approval to spend it, like for capital. Other, the other of those less than fifteen or so reserve account, some of those are just require board approval to. some of those are, just require board approval to move money in. So whether it's the workers comp account, it's the unemployment account, it's the retirement savings account, all those things, we can have, we can make recommendations to you as a board and move money into those accounts.
Right, and that's what you're proposing that.
That's what we're working on now, is what are the best ones?
That was the one with the question mark.
Yeah.
And we looked at it earlier, like, we have to make some decisions, you know? Make some decisions about where we can put some of that money. You know, just do it because you do it for an intended purpose and fund it properly. But maybe there's one or two that you didn't know about, that now you know about, that we can put, that we can put in, that we can put money into with a purpose, so.
Good job.
Anyone got any questions? Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tim. Dr. Walk, what's I presented, I don't know if you have anything else for reports?
Just, of course I do.
All right, thank you, Ritor.
We have new teacher orientation next Wednesday and Thursday. We have, all of our departments are presenting to the teachers to learn about the district, and they'll also use our mentor. Superintendent Conference Days are September 2nd and 3rd, which are quickly approaching. We just sent out the invitation and the agenda to all the teachers and staff to sign up for courses. We have workshops on school safety, professional learning communities, literacy, stop the bleed, suicide awareness and prevention, understanding brain development, student behavior, handle with care, train the trainer, and other workshops for all of our administrators, teachers, and CSDA members. I just want to mention, since we were just talking about budget, there has been a lot of news coverage regarding title funding and whether, when, whether and when it was going to be released. This week, they just announced that all of the schools should have their title money in. We had ours actually last week, most of it. We're still waiting on one portion of Title III to be released. But that's about 1.2 million that I foresee in titles. So I have about two weeks to get that, actually a week and a half at this point, to get that finalized. But that's a, that was a promising, good note for us, because that's a lot of money for salaries and so forth. And with that little piece that we're still missing, we'll add the PAC program. And I just want to thank our teachers, principals, and staff for working over the summer for our summer school program. I also want to thank our teachers for working in teams to write curriculum. We had a lot of curriculum writing going on to finalize and update, especially our new curriculum and some of our selective programs. They had working teams to complete the curriculum writing individually. And I want to thank those who attended the inter-reading professional development that we offered, as well as the PLC conference that are, is going on right now in Rochester. We have five people that went out to that. So thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you. This is Tondi Durye, Assistant Superintendent for Human Personnel Services.
Good evening. I'm thanking everyone who provided instructions, boards, meals to our students this summer. I think our students kind of enjoyed summer school program. At least every time, Dr. Walk, with me, I took some visits over there. I want to provide a little more information on the stipend position, the Medicaid billing liaison that our board approved this evening. Medicaid billing for districts is at risk with the federal government looking to make the process more restrictive. That's why Medicaid, Medicaid billing liaison and compliance facilitator is essential to ensure we maximize every reimbursement available despite the extra work that it takes. In November, at our PPS annual update, I'll provide more of a detailed report on our billable reimbursements from 2014 to the present. Also, our special vacation, the UPK grants are now in the hands of the fiscal unit at the New York State Education Department. And while there was no increase this year for full-day four-year-olds, we did see an $8 decrease for half-day students, and we were able to grow our half-day enrollment by four. So even in a tight funding climate, we're capturing every available dollar and continuing to expand opportunities for young learners. Lastly, I want to provide a little bit of perspective on our enrollment. From June 27th through August 19th, 33 students left the district this year while 85 enrolled. So that's a net gain of 52 students. In comparison, during the same period last year, 43 exited and 46 enrolled for a net gain of three. This growth really reflects, at least in my mind, in my perception, stronger registration systems, improved communication, and our focus, our intentions to help our students start on time. You know, I really believe that families are clearly choosing workervis, and the momentum in our schools is something to be proud of. And as Dr. Walklet said during her presentation, one of our priority goals is to improve attendance by 1%. So it's great to see that our students are enrolling before they see the yellow bus go by on September 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Brings us to consent agenda items. These items include item A, minutes from July 8, 2025, Board of Education Reorganization Regular Meeting. Item B, minutes, August 7, 2025, Special Meeting. Item C, minutes, Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. Item D, additional radio stations and television stations. Item E, disposal requests, textbooks from EMB and HVE. Item F, disposal requests, outdated or irreparable equipment. Item G, donation, $1,000 to Workervis School District Athletic Department for the Workervis Class 2025. Item H, District Treasurer's Financial Reports, June 2025. Item I, District Treasurer's Financial Reports, from July 2025. Item J would be the approval for these consent agenda items. I have a motion and a second. Joe?
Second.
And Michael, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Personnel employment agenda items. Item A, resignation math teacher, Walter Hoffman. Item B, resignation internal claims auditor, Walter Hoffman. Item C, termination employee 5113. Item D is leave of absences. Item E is an appointment, 2025 summer school teachers and substitute teachers. Item F is an appointment, probationary club managers, Amber Herbert and Jennifer Pagan. Item G is, is an appointment, department chairs, grade level chairs, co-curricular and coaching appointments for the 2025, 2026 school year. Item H, appointment, probationary school monitors, Marissa Fuller, Kara Spears, and Sabrina Vivaqua, I believe that's pronounced. I apologize if that is not correct. Item I is an appointment, probationary teacher aides, Lydia Robertson, Jessica Forster, Karen Kobayashi, Brittany Mayfield, and Kiara Garcia. Item J, appointment, probationary security attendants, Anthony Padone and James Myers. Item K is an appointment, probationary typist, Spanish English speaking, Cecilia Ralph. Item L, appointment, probationary food service helper, Megan Iron. M, appointment, support staff substitutes, Jayden Potter and Louis Correa. Item N, appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the 2025, 2026 school year. Item O is an appointment, stipend positions for the 2025, 2026 school year. Item P is an amendment to board docs, the personnel agenda item from June 17, 2025. And then finally, Q, approval of personnel employment agenda items for this meeting. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Michael, Sir, and Joe, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to our action items. Item A is a resolution, grant dispersment agreement between the Workervis Central School District and the dormitory authority of the state of New York. I have a motion, a second, bring to the floor.
Motion.
Michael, Joe. Any questions or discussion? Jeremy?
A question, it was dated for the work starting 2024, is that the work already been completed? Or is it just a?
The work is completed, this paperwork is still in the process. That is the paperwork, it's a welcome.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Great question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed motion carried. Item B, purchase, purchase of new instructional textbooks and online materials, National Geographic panorama, US history and world history for social studies, grade six through eight from Sengeage Learning. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Joe?
Second.
And Jeremy? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C is the CSDA memorandum of agreement for stipends. Motion and a second, please.
A motion.
Nancy and Joe. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, CSDA memorandum of agreement, medical billing liaison and compliance facilitator. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Michael?
Okay.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, district-wide academic plan for the 2025, 2026 school year. Motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Michael, Joe. Questions or discussion? All in favor? No opposed? Motion carried. Item F, international trip request, Workervis High School trip to Italy and Germany in 2028. I have a motion and a second, bring to this floor.
Second.
Joe and Michael. Any questions or discussion?
Is this replacing the Florida trip? I don't think so.
Now, this is post-COVID, trying to bring back experiences for kids to come places. Last year, there was a group of eight or 10 that went with Spanish teachers from Costa Rica. Our two teacher, Casey Stenkerus was here, took a group of kids to do a science study at Yellowstone last spring break. And Jackie Jenkins is leaving this summer of '26, they're going to France and Spain. And then this is '27, right?
Twenty-eight.
At '27, '28, they're going Italy, Germany. So this will be a trip that'll be in the summer for kids who want to go to get experience, cultural experience. So it's not a class trip, it's, if you're interested, come to the interest meeting, find out more about it. If your parents say yes.
What about board members? I think board members.
Yeah. And then you set up a payment schedule, you know?
Yeah.
But it's great experience, and it gives them so much time, because you can even set it up to have it taken out of your checking account every month. You know, it'll take X amount every month, so you can chip away over the next year and a half, or two year, to make it more affordable.
That's a good experience.
And then we're still working with JT and Tasha helping me with trying to still get that connection where we can get that Vocese aid portion, which would defer the cost for the kids and make it that much more accessible for more kids.
That's very awesome. Any other questions or? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Item G is also a trip request, Workervis cheerleaders to cheer camp. That's August 24th to 27th, 2025, at the Lake Brendan Mauer Camp in Homestead, Pennsylvania. I have a motion and a second. Joe? And Jeremy, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Do we pay for that?
The other girls pay.
Yeah.
So you can go to Italy or you can go to Homestead.
Is that one rate? Did he show us that's like next week?
Yes.
That's, yes.
We realized more than just other trips, we realized, oh, we have to contact.
Because he answered.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Man's down the wire on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. H, adoption of the tax reform for the 2025, 2026 school year. I have a motion and a second. Donnie and Judy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I is a Workervis free library payment schedule, 2025, 2026 school year. Motion and a second, please. Jeremy and Joe. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. J is a resolution, authorization to transfer funds from fund balance to the appropriations fund. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Michael, Sir, Joe. Any questions or discussion? I should say, any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. K is a district-wide school safety plan for the 2025, 2026 school year. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Judy and Joe. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. L is health and welfare contract with the Eldred Central School District, 2024, 2025 school year. Motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Donnie and Joe.
If you wonder why it's last four years and you just have to bill for Eldred, what does it mean if there are kids in our district that need to have certain things done by the nurse? You can say they go to Homestead, that's inside the Eldred district. But Eldred would provide the services and then bill the home school. But they're a little behind on the bill. We're okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Item M, appointment, lead evaluator of teachers, 2025, 2026 school year. Motion and a second. Nancy and Joe. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. N, lead evaluator of principals, 2025, 2026 school year. Motion and a second.
Motion.
Michael?
Sir.
Joe? Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Item O, capital project allowances and change orders.
Motion.
Michael? Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. P, approval agreement between Workervis Central School District and GWB HLLC for the 2025, 2026 cross-country season. I have a motion and a second. Brother, Jeremy? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Q, policy, first reading of policy numbers 1140, 7214, and 7215. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Mike? Joe? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. R, policy, first and final reading for policy number 7360. Motion and a second. Jeremy?
Check.
Judy, thank you. Questions or discussion?
Yes. John? Dr. Ball? I have a question about this is, about weapons in schools, this particular policy. And, and I've served, obviously, you know, I've served on the committee for a while, but not recently. So.
We'll have to have you back next time.
Yeah. My question is, the policy, it, I almost think it was one of these by OU Vocese that we just took and because it was complete in and of itself. However, the first sentence of the policy talks about suspension of students who bring a weapon to school, except those students who received prior permission from the Port Jervis Board of Education. What the heck?
There could be.
What would be, what would be?
There could be examples, like the trap team. You know, if they had to bring their, if they.
Going arrows?
Or guns, the shoot plays, and you know, so there are, there are exclusion. I can't imagine us ever doing it.
I mean, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be bringing them to school. They should be in the school.
But it gives you permission that if there was some reason, for whatever reason, it would give you permission at the board.
So that has to come to the board.
I guess because it's such an extreme thing.
Yeah, because of this reactive right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then it goes on to say, and forgive me, I'm sure I'm misinterpreting this somehow, that special ed students are almost exempt from suspension if they bring a weapon to school. Now, special ed isn't just physical or educational, you know, disabilities. It's mental health issues as well. So forgive me if I'm not saying this correctly. I'm not trying to offend anybody.
But it might be a length of time or where they might be placed. Isn't it for a special ed?
So it's, so in special education, there's a certain number of inches that might have to be for all students. But when it comes to special education, students and as well as teenage students suspected of having disability or a student with a Bible or an IEP, they have certain procedural rights and safeguards. So prior to, you know, suspending a student for maybe a year or six months, we have to have what we call a manifestation determination review. But we do have the right protocol through that process to, it does not exclude a student with a disability from having.
Suspension.
Suspend a long-term suspension. We can place them in what they call an intermittent alternative educational setting, as Dr. Bell's just discussed, in abbot district placement or home instruction. But it does not exclude students from consequences or.
Okay. But they can bring a three-inch where somebody else can't bring a four.
Well, they can't bring anything, but when we feel like a long-term suspension, there's certain very clear guidelines and parameters that have to be followed for all students.
Well, I would imagine, I mean, really. But I'm reading it and not, having not been in on the whole discussion, you know, where it comes to a final read, I was like.
Where the regular can make at home instruction for a year. And special ed can make at home instruction for a couple of weeks, and then we find out a placement for an Vocese somewhere else that are more appropriate.
Well, I mean, I understand when you write these things, you really have to be yourself.
They're generic, yeah.
Some, so.
But I will tell you, oftentimes if a student with a disability has a weapon, we have a manifestation determination review. Very often, the determination that a nexus does not exist, and therefore, they are allowed to be suspended for.
The same as in.
The same as a general education student. We just have to follow the law.
Yeah, it's a regulation.
Yes.
All right. That was all I wanted to ask.
Like a question, we have a couple of questions to answer. I'll come back. Any further questions or discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Item S. Policy, Second and Final Reading for Policy Number 7314. I have a motion and a second.
O.
Judy and Nancy, thank you. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Believe it or not, that was the end of our consent agenda items. Brings us to Board Member Items. Too early for our Board Committee Reports, right? I started those just yet, let's check that off. Board Member Comments. Michael?
Just, it sounds like it's been a great summer. A lot of hard work going on, and it's going to continue all year. Good luck to all the buildings for the opening of school. Just to stick in there, the MISBA Conference starts October 22nd this year in New York City.
October, New York City. Keith?
Yeah, welcome back, kids. And Bill, Harris, and I both attended the New York State Board Convention in Albany, which I think we'll try to put together something so we can share a little bit about what we did learn.
Awesome, thank you. Nancy?
Same, I reiterate the same thing. And I did, I enjoyed, particularly this year, I enjoyed Casey's student's presentation. I mean, it's always good to see and a good thing, but this year, for whatever reason, I mean, maybe just the format was very interesting.
Mark?
Yeah, thank you to all of our students for the presentation. I'm a little educational, as always. I still don't know if I'm supposed to cut down the trees or not.
Have, Tanya.
We'll figure that out. I would like to wish all the best for our fall sports. I hope all of our teams have a successful season. And, you know, educators and the rest of the faculty, you know, hit it hard and have another great wonderful year this year. Thank you for everything you do.
Tony?
Yeah, excuse me, I just want to say, you know, welcome back to everybody who's going to be coming back, all the staff and students, and to all the parents, first time, or little guys that are starting school, if you're nervous. Parents out there, you're going to be fine, unless, don't need anything.
Yeah, excited to see the school start. We also get T-shirts too, that we're working really hard on the first Board Meeting tonight, putting in the long hours just before school. One thing I did, what I forgot to call attention to as we were doing the items, but Policy Number 1140. Got it buried in the excitement of the number there was that that's going to be bringing on an eighth-grade student to be an ex officio member. So I didn't know if you wanted to say something about that, but I thought that was going to be fun for this upcoming year.
Yeah, as part of new legislation that was approved in the budget last spring, all districts are now required to have students on the board. Well, we've had two students on the board for probably 30-some years, a junior and a senior. And so we had a conversation, we want to continue to do that. We said we did, because we love the idea that the senior kind of trains the junior, and that carries on that tradition, so there's a continuity from year to year. But then we had a conversation about after all the great student book we had in the high school library last February, when we did the strategic plan, our kids had so many great ideas from, whether it was middle school or then high school. Back when we had the conversation, geez, should we let the middle school pick somebody who's an eighth grader so that they can feel more invested in their own education? And when we spoke to Eileen Cook, she was, she went, absolutely. I can think of a bunch of eighth graders that would be great candidates, let's go. So when we come back in the fall, and this is, I'll mention it later, but when we come to our new locations for board meetings in the fall, you're going to see a senior, a junior, and an eighth grader. So it'll be three students sitting up here. And they will no longer leave after the reports. They're going to stay for the meeting and be part of the conversation, believe it or not. Because that's one of the things to stay once. They don't want to just come do a report and skedaddle. They want them to be here because if something comes up that would be pertinent, we want to know what they think. So it's got to be pretty neat to add another component to it for the middle school. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, bro. Just so all policy numbers are not totally boring. But yeah, I'll pass it on.
I know everybody. Everybody good? I will just echo everybody with welcome everybody back, but also reminding everybody, I had this conversation with my family the other day, discussing, you know, back-to-school shopping, people are starting to put all their Halloween stuff out already. So I'd also like to talk to the pumpkin spice lovers of the world. It is still August. So students and staff, enjoy the last couple of weeks of your summer, right? It's August still, so enjoy the end of the summer. Students coming back, do a little bit of your cell phones. See you in a couple of weeks. We got the dates. Okay, so Dr. Bell, the dates to remember.
Okay, tomorrow, we have Regents Exams at EME. On Thursday, we have summer school graduation at nine o'clock in the high school cafeteria, 9:00 AM.
Dr. Bell, sorry, we did have to, they're at the high school. We had to move out of EME.
Oh, you had to move the exams because they're cleaning?
Yeah, no, yeah, they had to do something before, so pre-help will begin today, and then we'll be here tomorrow.
Again tomorrow.
The parents, everyone knows that, but I don't want to.
Okay, thank you. Monday, August 25th, which is next Monday, HBE's pre-K and kindergarten orientation is at 6:00. So again, that's next Monday. Next Wednesday, August 27th, the high school freshman orientation is from 9:00 to 11:00 here at the high school. On Thursday, August 28th, kindergarten orientation at East Main Street from 5:30 to 7:30. This is when you really know summer's coming to an end. August 28th and 29th, which is next Thursday and Friday, Senior Portraits, all day. That's usually the start. We tell parents, buckle up, because this year is going to fly. That's just the first of many, many, many lasts, you know, in your kid's high school sphere. So that's going to be the auxiliary rubber gym all day on Thursday and Friday, the 28th to 29th. The first day of school for students is on Thursday, September 4th. The high school PTSA will meet on Wednesday, September 10th, 6:30 in the high school libraries. Thursday, September 11th, we'll have the 9-11 Ceremony as well, et cetera, starting at 8:30 at the Deer Park Town Hall. On Monday, September 15th, HBE PTSA Spirit Ware Sale begins, the HBE PTSA Meeting at 6:00. And also on September 16th, I'm sorry, Tuesday, September 16th, Open House, grades 1 to 3 for EME. And Tuesday, September 16th, is also our next board meeting, and it will not be here. It will be in the new boardroom at the district office at 150 Pike Street. On September 16th. So people in the public who like to come to board meetings, you can park right on Pike Street, or you can park on the side lot by the library and by our PPS office, and you'll come in the front door on Pike Street on the northern end, closer to PJP, that end of the building, not the library end, that's mental health. But people will come right in the front door, and the new boardroom is right there in the front. And we're going to use it not only in the boardroom, but we're going to use it for meetings. We're going to use it for teacher training sessions. So it'll be more purposes other than the boardroom. What we call the boardroom, I have a preference, you guys.
And there'll be coffee, right?
There'll be coffee.
Coffee in the boardroom. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Two is 2111, 911. Corman of our meeting, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Michael and Joe and Judy and Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.